Are you ready? Yep, you're ready. You want to go? All right, good evening, everyone. If we could have Pastor Young here start with the invocation, please.
Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for another year. Thank you for the rain. Thank you for the blessings over our valley and our city. As we begin this year, Lord, we pray for your wisdom and your guidance upon our leaders, the council, and our mayor, and all of our government officials. May your blessings be upon them. Lord, we ask for wisdom and understanding to lead with purpose and vision for the good of all of our community. Guide the decisions of this house. I pray, Father, that your hand would be upon each of them. I pray for their strength and their health, their homes, their families. May you bless them and reward them openly for all the things that they do for our city. May your kindness be with us and be upon us, and we thank you for this opportunity to go forward into this new year. May your blessings be upon us all. We ask this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you for the honor.
In the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the perfect end to its peril.
All right, good evening, everyone. I see we have a few people here, just a couple. Happy New Year, everybody. We're going to start off with consideration of approval of agenda. If I could get someone to make a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Lambert?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
And can I get a second? Councilmember Jones? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. All right, so moving on to item five, presentation certificates of recognition. Do we have those? All right, I'm gonna go for a walk. All right. Yes, I have a face and voice for radio. All right, good evening, everyone. So I get to present this award, and it's a pretty special award. I've actually worked with this person for a very long time. We've known each other since the early 90s, even though we're not that old. I'm here to present the Employee of the Year presented to Ivan Mendez. So Ivan, can you come up here? All right, Ivan. We hereby express our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the City of Las Manas and its citizens, and this council will award you their certificate for the year of 2022 from the City of Las Manas. So thank you, Ivan. And do we have, more importantly to be, I think I lost my mic. More importantly to be a city employee, the hours and time and dedication it takes to do this, I also want to recognize your family. So if we can have your family come up and take some photos with you, that'd be great. Awesome. All right, thank you, Ivan. Ivan, one more thing, sorry. All right, and if I could get Kelsey. Is Kelsey here? All right. Kelsey, how many pronounce your last name? DeGeire, okay, see? All right, Kelsey. I gotta read it, I gotta read it to you first. I gotta read it to you first. All right, so this is a certificate of recognition presented to Kelsey DeGeire, Accounting Clerk to Finance Department, in recognition of your outstanding performance and dedicated service to the City of Las Manas and for being named Employee of the Month December 2022. Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you.
I'm just standing up here, aren't I? All right, is Dave Anderson here? David Anderson from the Airport Advisory Commission? No? Okay. Anybody here representing David Anderson? Just got to ask. All right. So this is a proclamation recognizing David Anderson, Airport Advisory Commission member, whereas David Anderson was appointed to serve as a member of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission on January 6, 2021, and whereas David Anderson faithfully attended regular meetings of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission, and whereas David Anderson was a dedicated member of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission continually provided his support to the goals and missions of the commission, and whereas David Anderson fulfilled his term as a member of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission on December 31, 2022, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the City of Las Manas do hereby recognize and commend David Anderson for his dedicated service as a member of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission. So thank you, David, and we'll make sure he gets that. I have Larry Leonardo. Is Larry here? Oh, Larry, come on up. All right, Larry. This is a proclamation recognizing Larry Leonardo, Airport Advisory Commission member, whereas Larry Leonardo was appointed to serve as a member of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission on January 6, 2021, and whereas Larry Leonardo faithfully attended regular meetings of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission, and whereas Larry Leonardo was a dedicated member of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission and continually provided his support to the goals and missions of the commission, and whereas Larry Leonardo fulfilled his term as a member of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission on December 31, 2022, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the City of Las Manas do hereby recognize and commend Larry Leonardo for his dedicated service as a member of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission. Thank you, Larry. All right, is David King here? David King, no. Is anyone representing David King? No? All right. This is a proclamation recognizing David King, Airport Advisory Commission member, whereas David King was appointed to serve as a member of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission on January 6, 2021, and whereas David King faithfully attended regular meetings of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission, and whereas David King was a dedicated member of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission and continually provided his support to the goals and missions of the commission, and whereas David King fulfilled his term as a member of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission on December 31, 2022, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the City of Las Manas hereby recognize and commend David King for his dedicated service as a member of the Las Manas Airport Advisory Commission. So thank you, David. Richard Stewart here. Nope. Okay. This is for a proclamation recognizing Richard Stewart, Measure P Committee member, whereas Richard Stewart was appointed to serve as a member of the Las Manas Measure P Committee on January 15, 2020, and whereas Richard Stewart faithfully attended regular meetings of the Las Manas Measure P Committee, and whereas Richard Stewart was a dedicated member of the Las Manas Measure P Committee and continually provided his support to the goals and missions of the committee, whereas Richard Stewart fulfilled his term as a member of the Las Manas Measure P Committee on December 31, 2022, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the City of Las Manas do hereby recognize and commend Richard Stewart for his dedicated service as a member of the Las Manas Measure P Committee. Thank you, Richard. Gerald Geisel? Did I pronounce that right? It's Gerald? Geisel, okay. Well, let me do that wrong twice. All right. Whereas, this is a proclamation recognizing Gerald Geisel, Measure P Committee member, whereas Gerald Geisel was appointed to serve as a member of the Las Manas Measure P Committee on January 15, 2020, and whereas Gerald Geisel faithfully attended regular meetings of the Las Manas Measure P Committee, and whereas Gerald Geisel was a dedicated member of the Las Manas Measure P Committee and continually provided his support to the goals and the missions of the committee, whereas Gerald Geisel fulfilled his term as a member of the Las Manas Measure P Committee on December 31, 2022, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the City of Las Manas do hereby recognize and commend Gerald Geisel for his dedicated service as a member of the Las Manas Measure P Committee. There's Tom Nebe here. No? Anybody here representing Tom? All right. This is a proclamation recognizing Tom Nebe, Measure P Committee member, whereas Tom Nebe was appointed to serve as a member of the Las Manas Measure P Committee on January 15, 2020, whereas Tom Nebe faithfully attended regular meetings of the Las Manas Measure P Committee, whereas Tom Nebe was a dedicated member of the Las Manas Measure P Committee and continually provided his support to the goals and missions of the committee, whereas Tom Nebe fulfilled his term as a member of the Las Manas Measure P Committee on December 31, 2022, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the City of Las Manas do hereby recognize and commend Tom for his dedicated service as a member of the Las Manas Measure P Committee. All right, what about Gary Munoz? Gary here? No? I'm striking out here tonight. All right. This is a proclamation recognizing Gary Munoz, Parks and Rec Commission member, whereas Gary Munoz was appointed to serve as a member of the Las Manas Parks and Recreation Commission on December 17, 2020, and whereas Gary Munoz faithfully attended regular meetings of the Las Manas Parks and Recreation Commission, and whereas Gary Munoz was a dedicated member of the Las Manas Parks and Recreation Commission and continually provided his support to the goals and missions of the commission, whereas Gary Munoz fulfilled his term as a member of the Las Manas Parks and Recreation Commission on December 31, 2022, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the City of Las Manas do hereby recognize and commend Gary Munoz for his dedicated service as a member of the Las Manas Parks and Rec Commission. Rob Robinson? Is he here tonight? No. This is a proclamation recognizing Clarence Rob Robinson, Planning Commission member, whereas Clarence Rob Robinson was appointed to serve as a member of the Las Manas Planning Commission on January 6, 2021, whereas Clarence Rob Robinson faithfully attended regular meetings of the Las Manas Planning Commission, and whereas Clarence Rob Robinson was a dedicated member of the Las Manas Planning Commission and continually provided his support to the goals and missions of the commission, whereas Clarence Rob Robinson fulfilled his term as a member of the Las Manas Planning Commission on December 31, 2022, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the City of Las Manas do hereby recognize and commend Clarence Rob Robinson for his dedicated service as a member of the Las Manas Planning Commission. All right, John Cates. Is John here? No. I think these guys all went to dinner together. All right. It's a proclamation recognizing John Cates, Planning Commission member, whereas John Cates was appointed to serve as a member of the Las Manas Planning Commission on January 6, 2021, and whereas John Cates faithfully attended regular meetings of the Las Manas Planning Commission, and whereas John Cates was a dedicated member of the Las Manas Planning Commission and continually provided his support to the goals and missions of the commission, and whereas John Cates fulfilled his term as a member of the Las Manas Planning Commission on December 31, 2022, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the City of Las Manas do hereby recognize and commend John Cates for his dedicated service as a member of the Las Manas Planning Commission. All right, and then the final proclamation tonight is a special one. This is the proclamation recognizing Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born in Atlanta, Georgia on January 15, 1929, and made a lasting impression as a key leader in the American Civil Rights Movement during the 1950s and 60s, and whereas during speeches and rallies in our nation's capital and throughout America, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. promoted his dream of a nation where everyone is treated as equals and is judged not by the color of their skin but by the content of their character, and whereas people throughout the world continue to look to Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s example as a model on human relations and his efforts in the daily struggle for civil human rights have continued since his assassination in 1968, and will continue until his dream of absolute freedom, equality, and justice for all is finally realized, and whereas the City of Las Manas is proud to honor and celebrate the life of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the City of Las Manas do hereby recognize Monday, January 16, 2023, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Las Manas, encourage all citizens to celebrate and remember the many accomplishments of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. All right. All right. We'll now move on to item six. This is the public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the city council chamber informational table at the back. At this time, I would invite the public to come forward and speak, and just as a reminder to please keep your phones off or on silent while you're in council chambers.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff. We're most pleased to be here primarily to wish you all a happy new year and a great start to a great coming year. To see the faces up there, new and old, it's just a pleasure to see you all in one place, and whether it's figurative or otherwise, you're all facing in the same direction. That's wonderful. So really pleased to see that happen. I like to see that all the time. I'm Tony Whitehurst, President of Chamber of Commerce, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to make a report to you. I'm going to hand that right and that privilege over to our executive director, Michelle Sandoval, who is the chamber's single sole paid employee. The rest of us are volunteers. None of us are compensated in any other way other than through the success of the Chamber of Commerce, which is really measured by the success of our businesses in Las Manas. We've weathered a very serious economic setback as so many of the communities in the valley and all over the U.S. and California particularly have weathered the same. Many of those communities have lost their chambers of commerce because there just was not enough business success in their communities to maintain their membership and to continue getting the support they needed to keep the doors open. We have lost half of our membership through the pandemic, and that is, in most cases, is going to be known as a fatal blow to the Chamber of Commerce. However, we've maintained our volunteers, we've kept the doors open, and with a little help from the city, we've actually held our own, and we're off and running trying to satisfy the conditions of the contract we made with the city, and that was to make things better for our community businesses, all of them. And so I'd like to present, and it's happening, it's happening. I'd like to present our executive director, Michelle Sandoval, to make a brief report, which we hope to do on a regular basis to keep you updated on how we're doing and how the city's doing as a result. So thank you all very much.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Sandoval, Director for the Chamber. I don't do public speaking, so I'm letting everybody know, and those who know me, know I don't do this, but my report on the Chamber, within the last four months, we've gotten some of our members back. Like Tony said, we did have a hard hit with those members. We're slowly getting them back. We've gotten 18 over the last six months and three within the last beginning of 2023. We are getting ready for six major events for the 2023 year. We have a ribbon cutting coming up on the 16th with Planet Fitness at 4:15. She did ask specifically if I could invite all of you personally. She did really want the city council there and to attend and show support. So moving forward with our mixers, with our ribbon cuttings, I would really appreciate it if city council could show up and show support. I know it's difficult. It's hard to attend them, I understand that, but if one of you can kind of switch off, it makes me feel a lot better when I tell them how much the city supports them, and when you show up, it kind of backs up what I'm saying. So if you guys can show up, that'd be great. Is there anything else?
What's the date and time on that, Michelle?
The 16th at 4:15. So she did ask if city council could show up a little bit earlier, too. So I don't know if that's in your schedule, but if you could, that'd be great. Do you have anything else? Thank you.
Hello, City Council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jim Coelho. I'm here to, I was asked to speak on behalf of the pickleball request for possibility of maybe putting our courts out on the rail trail. I'd like to give you a little bit of background from what I've done. I'm considered, you know, a, oh, I guess, a senior player, and I've been, I don't know, I guess I've probably been about like maybe six different states and a couple of different countries and played, so I have a little bit of background of what's been going on in this field. We'd like to see it with, the reason why we'd like to see it on the rail trail is because we'd like to see it bring downtown. I think downtown is probably the key spot for us. It centralizes your community, so they're not like community, be a field in one place and then another one in another place. We bring them downtown, and everybody can come down here and enjoy our downtown. We have so many players that come from out of town to play with us now. If they came to the middle of downtown and get to see what our community really looks like down here instead of an outskirts, it would be a big plus for us. And we can have other events, because we have pros that would like to come here and give the lessons and throw tournaments on here, which we can combine tournaments with pickleball, we could do with cornhole and pickleball together, we can do different events like this. It's not just a one single thing. And the courts, you know, we need the amount of courts that we need, it's probably going to be anywhere from eight to 12 courts to accommodate, because we have so many new members weekly coming out to want to play, and we want to make it a reasonable and expensive so we can have the youth, we can have the working class that can come out in the evenings and play, not just the retirement community, because it's not just the retirement communities that's playing out here now. It's people from all over with all backgrounds, and it's a great place to meet people if you come to town. And in other communities, they actually advertise pickleball courts there and for your, for your communities, especially your retirement communities, and it ups the value of your properties in your local communities. So if we can build something that really looks well, is presentable, we'll have people that want to come here, because we put them on the websites and they find you. And since we're between the Bay Area and Fresno area, they come through here, they'll pull off on here all the time, and then they want to go to your places. They always ask them, where do you go eat? Where's a good place to go visit? Where to stay? Because tournaments last maybe four days, so they stay here. They don't just come through, you know, and you do it a couple times a year. So a great exposure for our community, and hopefully that we can get on board with that. I'm glad to see that you're interested, first off. So I'm just, that was what I wanted to say, and if you ever have any questions or need some advice, or any of the places I've been or anything like that, you can talk to our, to Lori Bellotti and Danitz, they're our ambassadors for pickleball in Las Manas. They do a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy. My name is Lori Bellotti. You've seen me before, many times, and the reason I'm here is because I want to support pickleball, and I want to share also with the new council members and the mayor a little bit about our background. I'm not going to go and do a big, long thing tonight, so don't worry. But I just, I just, well, first of all, I want to say congratulations on your new positions and welcome. We're happy to have you. We've been playing pickleball in Las Manas for almost eight years, and just like pickleball groups all over the U.S., our pickleball group has grown, and we're getting, like Jimmy said, we're getting new players daily. You've probably seen in the media, some of the, you know, pickleball in the media is just, it's all over the place, as they're even going to have major league pickleball teams now. And I do want to say that it is a game for all ages. It's not just for seniors, it's for all ages, probably starting from about age 10 up, and it's... And it's, it's grown so much, especially 20-somethings and 30-somethings, it's really grown in that area. And it's amazing what's happening with younger people. We first came to the city in April of 2019 to keep you informed about the growth of our group and to ask you to consider building public courts in Los Banos to give all Los Banos residents access at any time during the day. And the reason I'm saying at any time during the day is because there's time to play at the community center in the mornings, but people who work can't do that. And then there's also the racket club, but you have to pay to join the racket club. And so we want access for all members of our community. And we want access for students and we want access for people who work. And anyway, we've continued to talk to city officials explaining the benefits of pickleball courts in Los Banos, and I know all of you know, I've talked to all of you. So our group was so happy when funds for courts were appropriated on the 2223 fiscal budget. We have really appreciated the support that we've received from you to make this dream possible. Now we find ourselves waiting for something to happen. We're hoping plans are moving forward. I worry about the ARPA funding because I don't know, I'm not really sure when it's going to run out, but I don't want us to lose that opportunity. So that's one concern of mine. It's just, it's really important that we get going and that we get talking about this and we get planning for this. When you do move forward, I have a request. And that when you're discussing particular plans for the courts, please invite some experienced pickleball players to sit on that committee. We have been to many facilities all over California and a lot of other states and, like Jimmy said, other countries. And we know the basics of what we need and we've talked to a lot of people about what is needed. And so I think it would benefit you if you included some of us when you did get to that point. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Catherine Young, and this is my daughter Chloe. And we are also members of the pickleball community here in Los Banos. As Lori said, all ages now are playing. It's no longer for old parts, pardon my language. Don't take it out on me at the court, okay? No, all kidding aside, it really is a growing sport. It's booming. As I go out with friends of my own age, people say, oh, you play pickleball? I've heard it's so fun. And the next question is, where do you play? I have, some of my daughter's teachers and faculty members have asked me, oh, how could I join? Unfortunately, though, they run into the office towers of the community center and they're not able to play with us. So it really would reach more members of the community than I think you might realize having courts available to the public. We really enjoy it. It's very, very fun. It's kind of silly, just the name alone kind of tells you how it goes. It's uplifting. It's great exercise. And we really would love to share the joys that we have playing pickleball with our peers and the other members of the public. So we'd greatly appreciate you moving forward and taking the time to, you know, really help us out and share this joy with everyone. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Dana Valladell, and I'm glad to be able to speak in front of you today. And I was looking at the proposed budget for these pickleball courts, which I'm kind of amazed at the cost. Maybe I've been out of it, but my husband and I have a pickleball court at our house that maybe cost us $15,000 to put in. That's one court, 15,000 times six. And I know it's not a city, but I'm just amazed that it's going to cost so much. But really why I'm standing up here right now is because I see that one of the proposals is to cut the cost and eliminate the lights. And I know the lights are a big part of the budget. But just this week, schoolteachers are off. And I've had several of them, I've taught several of them how to play pickleball this couple, the last couple of weeks. And now they want to start coming after school. So I said, well, you have to come to the racket club. And they're willing, of course, to come to the racket club and play. The lights there are horrible. But I said, you know, I'll come out there with you guys for a while to get you going to start. But really, for our working people, they need to have a place with lights to be able to play. And I'm telling you, that's probably one of the key things. We're good. I mean, I have a pickleball court at my house. I'm never going to be lacking a pickleball play. But I'm not doing this for me, I'm doing this for the community because I know what pickleball does for people. It makes them happy, makes them fit, it brings a community together. And I just want to take a moment to have every pickleball player here stand up. And these people are a family. We support each other and it's just going to grow. If we put it in our community, it's going to happen everywhere. So thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ballard, I'm a citizen of Los Banos. I know you guys look at me and think that I'm going to come up here and knock something or be an adversary for a second. But I am for your pickleball. I am not for the estimate that I saw. I think it's really high. And then I was listening to Jimmy talk, and it already has electrical there, I'm assuming, from the Henry Miller Plaza. That's already been plumbed in, right? So wouldn't it cost less if you already had that power there to build it on the canal? And then maybe you can put in the 10 or 15 courts that they need for tournaments, and they are centrally located. It's not that I don't want the sandbox not taken away. I think the kitty litter box should be cleaned up. But it sounds more central and more attractive, and if it helps your downtown, I don't know how much you spend on writing up the quote of, to build it at the other park. But it might be more beneficial for the city to use those ARPA funds and put it downtown. Thank you.
Hello. Mr. Mayor, City Council. Again, congratulations to all your new positions. And I'm glad to see some familiar faces. It's wonderful. I hope you enjoyed my Christmas gift to you by not being here in December and in the last part of November. But I am back. My name is Shandra Lewis, and I'm a resident of the Los Banos, of Los Banos at Rancho Los Banos Mobile Home Park. I do understand that the encampment is supposed to be moved, is from what I understand. But I wanted to let you know that we are still having problems. Two of our seniors' cars have been stolen. Yes, they left their keys in the car. But they, the gentleman that just got his pickup stolen has lived there 30 years, has never taken his keys in. And it's been seen in the homeless camp, the vehicle. I had to report a man that was in the park and he was in a stolen vehicle. So, and he was from the homeless camp, and that's where he was at. So I don't want you guys to go back on not moving them because their activity is not just trespassing. Now we're involving stolen vehicles. The man threatened me when I confronted him. So they're not the best citizens that Los Banos can have. Yes, they're homeless. Yes, they need help. I can guarantee you, each and every one of them out there in that camp has been offered help at more than one time. So I implore you that you don't go back and that you continue with moving them for our safety at our park. I thank you, and you have a good evening and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. I'm, my name is Blanche, and I'm a citizen of Los Banos downtown area. And I'm here representing the Elks Lodge. What you said, Mayor, at the last city council meeting is so true. Thank you very much. Just so you can know, the Los Banos, we wanted to announce that the Los Banos City, that the, that the Elks Lodge has received three grants in a total of $8,500 to buy warmth for the homeless. We see that we need to be good citizens and we have always helped people out throughout our community for close to 50 years now. I just want to let you know that we've actually helped out the community, and it's been documented. We have donated to the community $1,251,000 total throughout us being Elks. We have also applied for many grants. The grants that we've applied for is anything when infrared equipment was first kind of invented. We videotaped and recorded on a VHS tape, it's been that long, and we raised money in order to fulfill our local fire departments with infrared equipment. We've also been for decades now providing third graders a special dictionary so they learn how to use books. Even today, we still do that. It's important for them to learn how to flip a page. Fourth graders, we provided backpacks and equipment for fourth graders, and we continue to do that. We've sponsored a very national individual famously known as Ray Lozano that talked to our high school students year after year about the dangers of drugs. While it's not popular, we felt that it's important to stand up nationally and locally to say no for the drugs and to educate youth about that and their parents. So there are things that we do that might not be politically correct, but it's humanly correct. We've also during the pandemic got grants for Kingsview to provide these special individuals their laptops so they could continue learning in school. We provided and fed individuals in the pantries year after year, and especially during the pandemic. We've provided special CPR equipment for our fire department. They even have like a doggy so they could do CPR in a doggy. We have countlessly provided to our community and will continue to do so. We do have another grant in line, and that's because it'll be our second time around. The Merced County had a stand-down before the pandemic. That's for veterans to come in. It's old Vietnam, some of you that are veterans know.
Exactly.
We went ahead and actually provided thousands, tens of thousands of dollars, bought combat, bought boots, socks for the homeless veterans. We also were directional individuals, and we even had a member singing the National Anthem. The Merced Elks Lodge fed everybody, so we were very active in that stand-down. We've had in line a grant for that second annual stand-down. So we've been providing a lot for our city, and we just wanted to invite you and others, if you wish, to help out. We've purchased, we spent all the money, and we spent it also locally. And we welcome you because we're going to be distributing these warm clothing items to our homeless that need it. They are our local citizens. It's important that we stand up for what is right. Also, we do have a suggestion. We did have a meeting, and we suggest in future planning, we would like to suggest for the homeless shelter, for sponsorship of rooms. So we nonprofits and individuals can sponsor a room.
That's our time, I'm sorry. That's our time, sorry.
So thank you very much. And that was really it, just letting you know that we'll be happy to sponsor a room. We encourage others to sponsor rooms. So if you could add that to your plan. Thank you.
All right.
Hello, everybody. I'm Tom Bellotti. Been here for 76 years, so I know a little bit about the town. And you all know I'm a big proponent of pickleball, and I think it's really important to our city. But I also want to just say, recreation in general needs to go somewhere. We've gone backwards. There were so much more available facilities-wise, staff-wise, in years past. And our town has grown. We've got the young people, we've got the old people, they're looking for things to do. And I think we really need to look in recreation overall. I've gotten to know Joe, I'm your recreation director, you've got a jewel there, and I hope you'll support him and back him. And we'll see where we go. Thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Good evening, Major Yannis and council members. Welcome to all the people that are sitting in their new seats. I'm Anna McCauley, 25-year Los Banos resident. First, I want to shout out to West Side Express, our wonderful and regional, local and regional newspaper. Jean Lieb, Jean Spivak, and others have done a masterful job bringing this paper to life. Subscribe to it if you haven't. This is a newspaper that we finally have, that I think is at its finest, and we need this to continue. You know, when the enterprise moved everything over to Merced, we were no longer, we no longer had any publication that pointed out to things going on here. And this is such a breath of fresh air. For all the years, this is another item. For all the years we've been residents, we've heard so much talk from previous councils about bringing commercial companies real living wages, not stuff at fast foods and a dress shop here or there. To date, we've had almost nothing added in 15 years except more houses. We've been here 25. We've been here full-time 15 years out of those 25. Thousands still travel out of this town to better-paying jobs because they have to. People, you know, council members, city managers in the past, you know, it's been all blah, blah, blah. We could have been a Patterson, Hollister, or Tracy. But oh, no, we had to have a cheap date, so they left. Anyway, it's obvious to many, we were never, we never had companies talking about even seriously coming here until we had Josh Panero as our city manager. Now, I don't know Josh very well. I didn't know him growing up, but from a lot of people that know him, we really have screwed things up. He had things, he had cities seriously looking to come here. And now here we are, looking at this again for a new manager. Contrary to a few, he was serious about getting things done in those nine months. And I've since learned about a lot of different things that he actually got moving, things that he implemented, said, hey, we need to do this or that, and we will see those results, and they're good results. He wasn't the one who just kind of fell in line because he was the next, because things were already in place. There were some things he actually brought forward. I say we bring him back. I don't know if he's interested in coming back. I don't know what the parameters would be. But those were part of, those people who were part of this groundswell uprising in his firing need to return to this podium and make your voices heard again. We need a city manager who acts and is willing to stand up to this council and any council. Because this, in a city manager role, they are our CEO. You folks have all, and I'm speaking of previous councils. The city council has basically been trying to run the city manager's job. They give the direction to staff, department heads, and the city manager- And the City Manager, in this case, Josh was trying to do what he's supposed to do. He got fired for it. We need a City Manager who's going to act and stand up. For too long, City Council has been calling the shots. This time it needs to be the CEO and it's a new year, a new council. And I say it's a City Manager's role to do what they're supposed to be doing and everybody else, get in your own lane and stay out of the way. Josh Panero was and maybe he could be again, I don't know. Our charter mandates the City Manager is the CEO, the one who runs the city. By the same token, City Staff needs to take direction from the City Manager. Too long it's been council directing the staff. They're the ones calling the shots and that needs to stop. This is a new council, a new year, and it's time to make a choice, to make these changes as they're needed. I don't know who's being considered, but there were plenty who were disgusted about leaving, losing somebody who really had some potential. I don't know all the details, but I think in time, we will find out exactly what happened. And I'm hearing more and more that there really were no real requirements why he had to be fired. This time, it's time this town grows up. We gained so little in the last 15 years, like I said, except houses. And for all of those who've been in city government over this time, you bear responsibility as well. Council gets too cozy with City Staff and needs to, they get too cozy with department heads and then we lose sight of the direction we're supposed to be going. It's time that the City Council recognizes what the job of a City Manager is. Josh grew up here. He's not jaded with years of cozy relationships that have been part of the department heads in the past City Council. I believe the previous mayor and council couldn't stand up to losing that cozy relationship. You have a choice. Stay in your own lane and let the City Manager, whoever comes in, do his job.
All right. Anyone else for the public forum?
Hi, my name is Roy Todd. I'm a business owner, resident of Los Banos and also one of the non-executive directors for the Chamber of Commerce. So I'm one of the folks that brought us the A M P M and the R O B E R in town. I want you all to know that, believe it or not, it took 30 years to put all this money together in order to make it happen. And I believed in Los Banos, that's why I came here, okay? I left my grandkids behind in Southern California to partner with my brother and make this happen. So the first part of my presentation, I want to talk about what the chamber's done for me, okay? I'm a person that came up here basically with their life savings and spent it, all right? Spent it. All the chips are on the table. 60 years old plus when I got here, all right? And all I can tell you is what it's done for me was when I first got here, we took over an existing situation down on the west side. And what the chamber did was they enabled me to use their facilities because if you've ever been in a McDonald's or a convenience store, there's not a lot of room, right? So they let me use the back part of their office and I interviewed basically employees that we were taking over, all right? My brother was, what do I want to say, key to getting that property developed. We had, one thing I've noticed, I've been to the last couple of meetings, this is an outstanding staff you have over here. Every time they've been asked a question, they come through and do it and they have a good answer for it. I have 30 some years in Fortune 40 companies and I know when somebody's, you know, not exactly dodging a question or something like that, they do, they had an absolutely great job of what they're doing, okay? So I'm not a government type guy at all, okay? I've never, I've never been, held any position within government. But one thing I could tell you is we had the mixers, that got me, Chamber of Commerce mixers, we did all those kinds of things. And with that, I learned a lot of people. I joined Rotary, I learned some more people. The more and more I got, the community was very welcoming and it was really great. I grew up in a town, when I moved there, I can relate to some of the folks here. When I moved to Simi Valley, there were 20,000 people there, right? Right now, there's 127,000 people there. We had a highway that went east to west, the California Highway 118. But we have here, we have the 152. The newspaper was named the Enterprise, for Christ's sake. I've already, you know, everything was the same, all right? I've already seen this movie, okay? And I know what, and I know what it takes. Everybody says, we need a better restaurant, we need a better this, we need a better that, okay? People, people vote with their wallet, okay? So if you want to get some of these big time players in here, you need, you need to show them why it's, why they should invest their money here. We've invested, we've invested our money in here, so we were all the way in. Okay, I'll flip, flip the script here a little bit. The chamber has a number of events going on here in 2023. April 15th will be the Downtown Spring Street Fair. Of course, we'll participate in the May Day events, Dad's Day Out, I'm going to chair that. And that's basically a car show. I kind of want to take it next level. I'd like to get a couple, maybe like some ag equipment and other Chamber of Commerce type of businesses to bring their vehicles out and maybe have a special section for that, they could pitch their businesses and so forth. July 8th is the Tomato Festival. Then we have a Fall Spring Fair, September 16th. October 27th is the Second Annual. I was, I sponsored the First Annual Halloween Trunk or Treat and we packed, we packed the Sixth Street with folks and they were nice, there were lots of nice, young families that did that kind of thing. So it was nice to see those folks out post-COVID and all that sort of thing. And then finally, we've, you know, we've always sponsored the, or put on the annual Christmas parade. And I know I'm out of time and I like to be on time, so thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else for the, for the public forum? No? All right, seeing none. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Richard Castaneda. I'm part of the pickleball community. Just kind of give you guys a little bit of a rundown. Before I got into pickleball, I used to play a lot of softball, a lot of baseball. Traveled all over the United States, played, got sponsored by Easton. And we played in, everywhere, all over the United States we played. I'm bringing up this story because it was basically the same predicament as what we see what's going on here. There's a little town in Texas called Mansfield. The residents there, a lot of people liked to play softball, a lot of people from the area, other states would come there to play softball. They approached the city, they built a few fields. The talent that was able to go there with just those three fields, it exploded, it boomed. And it exploded so much that they expanded it. And now that, from what they went from three fields, it's actually a full-on complex. It's called the Field of Dreams now. They built replicas of the Green Monster, the Giant Stadium, Allee Stadium, everything's artificial turf, but it started as something as simple as an idea. And I remember driving and you could see, I don't know if anybody remembers that, remembers that movie, Field of Dreams, where it says if you build it, they will come. Well, from those softball fields, it turned into a metropolis. A little gas station city like Los Banos is a full-blown metropolis. People are moving there from out of state just to be close to these fields. I've seen it firsthand, the restaurants, so much that during the summer, you can't even get a hotel room there. As I know, I've been there. We would have to pull a trailer for everybody to go and camp somewhere just to be able to get in there. So I sit here and I think about it and we see how something, you know, because we're in a crucial spot when it comes to Los Banos. We're on 152 between 99 and I-5. Those are lifelines in California. I know for being a production manager in Livermore, the way in the next 10 to 12 years where it's going, the Bay Area is putting it in gear. They're, they're moving because they know what's coming. We're going to go from a gas station type city to 10 to 12 years, the way they're looking at it, they don't even want gas back on the roads. So where are we looking? Where do we go? So I just wanted to bring some of those, those things up and I know I've seen it from other states and just having an idea and running with it and where it got them. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Domingo Sanval and I want to give you a big thank you for what you guys did for the toy drive. So I have the numbers. So total is 700 and something families. As they're almost 4,500 kids this year, me and my family. And thank you, the sponsors, Morning Star and WCG. It's a fish tournament to help me out and the rest of the community to help me to donate me the toys and everything to I can actually provide to, you know, all these kids in need and all these families. And thank you a couple, you know, people they actually donate things for all these kids. I have people come in and crying and say thank you because I can't afford to give anything to my family. So us did a very good job, you know, the whole community. Actually, I've had that event on the 17 in the Plaza. I've had a very successful event and, you know, well, thank you guys for supporting me in this journey. Next year, I got to go to 1,000 families. So I got to help my, the rest of the community and I got to, every year, I got to make it more bigger. So this is my third year, so thank you guys, I very appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the public forum? Do we have any, any comments ever sent?
Dear council members and Mayor Yanez, I would like to personally thank Councilmember Deborah Lewis for her continual advocacy in regards to the removal of the homeless encampment behind our mobile home park. You saw how much our residents were negatively affected and recognized that we had put up with three continual years of turmoil. Had it not been for you and Mayor Paul Yanez, I don't think anything would have ever changed. So thank you both from all the residents at the Rancho Los Banos Mobile Home Park. I understand that a couple council members believe that the homeless may return to your city parcel. So my question is, what plan does the council have to ensure that doesn't happen? In a previous email of mine, I actually addressed this issue and one of my suggestions was to make the parcel inaccessible to them. If they can't get into the property, then they won't be there. The city's fence that was on the property could be used so the homeless do not establish residency against our fence. Perhaps the council could discuss how your own fence could be used to protect our park and residents. If you foresee a major problem with them returning, then perhaps planting cactus by our fence could also be a deterrent. Has the soil on the parcel been tested recently? I'm curious to see if the soil is now contaminated since they burned toxic materials for three years there, not to mention the continual human excrement, urine and use of drugs. If the parcel is contaminated, wouldn't it, wouldn't they be forbidden to reside there? I'd hate to see all of us go back to the drawing board since this potential problem could be solved by making a few changes to the way the land sits now. In any event, thank you again, Ms. Lewis and Mr. Yanez. It's refreshing to see members who are actually trying to help our residents. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all. Sincerely, Casey Miller, Park Operator, Rancho Los Banos, MHP. Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members and everyone else in the room. My name is Maria Salinas and I am a resident of the Rancho Los Banos Mobile Home Park. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for finally taking action and deciding to remove the homeless encampment from our backyard. According to the option that you voted on, it should take the city two to four weeks for the removal process. I look forward to a peaceful and worry-free New Year. While I realize that it took a lot of time for the city clerk to read the surveys that were submitted by my neighbors at the previous meeting, I feel that it was important for you to hear from us. Even though the city attorney felt that it wasn't necessary to read the comments on the survey, I especially would like to thank Councilmember Lewis for taking it a step further by asking the clerk to read the comments as well. On a different but related note, I want to congratulate the city for your efforts in planning to provide appropriate shelter for the homeless. I have attached a Planning and Business Practices Guide that was prepared by Portland State University. There is a lot of helpful information that can come in handy for whomever takes over this tremendous but much-needed project. Also, I would like to ask if you have considered temporarily housing the homeless at the Los Banos migrant camp? Of course, this would be only for the winter months while the camp is vacant. Well, I don't know if it is, but it looks vacant to me. Furthermore, I would like to share my thoughts on the creation of the homeless shelter. Whether you decide on containers, tiny houses or some other structure, I think the site can include rooms with a single bed, a small closet and a small bathroom with a toilet and a sink. Create a large room with a kitchen, cafeteria, laundry room, showers and recreational areas. Teach, require the homeless to work in kitchens. Cooks, dishwashers, keep an inventory of groceries, et cetera. Assign them to cafeteria duties, servers, cleaning, et cetera. Teach, require them to do laundry. Or take it a step further and save the city and school districts some money by having the homeless launder the uniforms of city and school district maintenance workers. Schedule showers and recreation activities, make each person responsible for their duties. Keep track and give them credit for complying with their responsibilities. There is so much more that I can think of, but I hope that the little that I help provides help. Thank you for your time. And that was from Marina Salinas. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. All right. So moving on to Item 7, Consideration of Approval of Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council Member.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 236375 through 236807 in the amount of $4,076,326.20. City Council Resolution Number 6599, Reauthorizing Remote Teleconference Meetings of the Legislative Bodies of the City of Los Banos pursuant to the provisions of AB 361. City Council Resolution Number 6600, Appointing Members to the Measure P Citizens Oversight Committee, Richard Stewart and Nathan Mancebo. City Council Resolution Number 6601, Amending Fiscal Year 2022/2023 Budget by Increasing Appropriations in the Los Banos Park Fund for Landscape and Irrigation in the Amount of $84,170 for the Pacheco Park Irrigation Improvements Project. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right. Thank you. Any, any items anyone wants to discuss or tentatively remove? Do we have a motion? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull Item D for discussion and a separate vote, please.
Okay, request to pull Item D, which is
D is in David.
Okay, 6601?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any, any other items? Anyone else has? Do we need to make a motion on that or just to pull the item? Okay, all right. So we can, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with Items A, B and C?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve uh, the consent agenda minus D as in David.
Councilmember Lambert?
I'll second.
Second by Lambert? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes and let's go on to, to item D.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, um, my question to staff is, um, in the background information of this agenda item, uh, it indicates that the county had dedicated the land between the City of Los Vanos and this, um, Los Vanos Unified School District. The maps that were included were a bit, um, I, I really couldn't tell what portion was dedicated to us and what portion was dedicated to the school district. So I just wanted staff to clarify, um, if, if they have any portion of the park that we're going to be re-landscaping or the portion that was dedicated to them, was that where they're making their new construction site? I, I'm not sure. And if it is part of the park, um, is the school district going to share in the cost of any of this irrigation remodeling?
Good evening, uh, Councilmember Lewis. The parks, um, as a whole was originally one property that's including the Lofton Stadium part as well as the public pools and kind of where the library was. So currently what's dedicated to the, um, school district was essentially all of the Lofton stadiums and where their new construction is. This irrigation is going to be independent. It's only going to serve our portion, which is the north side of Lofton Stadium itself. That's including the little scout hut as well as our, uh, facility there, not including the county library.
Okay, that, that's what I wanted to clarify because it didn't indicate, uh, we just had, uh, some maps and I really couldn't tell what portion it was. Can only assume that's what it was. So that, that was my question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And I'll be happy to make a motion on this.
All right. We have a motion, uh, by Councilmember Lewis to approve item D. Can I get a second? Councilmember Begonia? All right. Second by, uh, by Begonia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes. All right. So next is item eight, public hearing. If you challenge proposed action as described herein in the court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. So 8A is public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of a categorical, categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and conditional use permit number 2, 20, uh, 2022-11 to allow the use of a type 41 alcohol license for the on-sale of beer and wine in conjunction with a bona fide eating establishment located at 435 West Pacheco Boulevard. Uh, and for this, we're going to go to interim city manager Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Um, I, this is the first time giving a presentation from this, this side of the dais. I'm usually down with the staff, um, so bear with me. Um, Neuron, if you can click through the presentation for me, awesome. So just a little bit of background on this particular project. The Planning Commission on December 14th recommended approval of this conditional use permit to the Las Vanas City Council. This was the former location of Ming's Restaurant. Uh, and Ming's operated there for decades. Uh, they ceased operations. It was about 2013, 2014 when they ceased operations and they operated with a type 41, which is for on-sale of beer and wine. Due to the lapse in time, it was more than a year, um, that Ming's has ceased their operations and a new operation is, um, looking to occupy the space. Uh, it does require a new conditional use permit. Next slide. The proposal before you tonight is a conditional use permit, which is needed according to our municipal code for issuance of any ABC licenses. This is for alcohol. Uh, this proposal is for a type 41, again, the on-sale of beer and wine in conjunction with an eating place. It is regulated by the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, ABC. And the proposed hours of operation, they will be operating seven days a week from 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. Next slide. Uh, this is the location of 435 West Pacheco Boulevard. Uh, it is the southeast corner of Paradise Lane and West Pacheco Boulevard. Access is off of Pacheco and Paradise Lane. Uh, the actual footprint of the building is not expanding, but there are modifications that will occur to the interior of the building. Next slide. So according to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this project is categorically exempt per Article 19, Section 15301 in that it is an existing facility and the existing floor print will not be expanded. Next slide. So the municipal code requires a conditional use permit analysis that looks at findings for general uses and it has those findings, uh, there's three findings that need to be made. And then there's four additional findings that need to be made for on-sale criteria. That's for any alcohol. And the issuing authority is ABC. Those findings are within the staff report and I'd be happy to go over them. Um, but for the sake of time, unless there's a question, we'll continue to move forward. Next slide. Uh, this particular project is located in Census Track 23.01. This is located in the southwest quadrant of the City of Las Vanas. This particular census tract runs from the Las Vanas Creek all the way to Mercy Springs Road. And there are currently 11 active licenses in that census tract. And the closest, uh, type 41, so type on-sale license is Eddie's Cafe, which is located at 401 West Pacheco and that's just east of this particular project site. Next slide. Uh, this is an exhibit of the camera locations. There are interior and exterior cameras. They're marked out in the red dots to highlight where those are located. So they're located, um, in the dining area and the storage area and also in the kitchen. Next slide. This is a photo of the interior, the proposed interior of the restaurant. Next slide. Another, uh, photo and locals that used to, uh, frequent Ming's, as I did myself. It looks a lot like the old Ming's, so it's exciting to see. It's a bit of home. Uh, next slide. This is the kitchen area. Next slide. So public comment, public hearing notices were mailed out to adjacent property owners and published in the said Sunstar on Friday, December 23rd. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. So staff is recommending, uh, that the city council would consider adopting Resolution 6602, finding the proposed project to be categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to Article 19, Section 15301 in that it is an existing facility, and approve conditional use permit number 2022-11 to allow the on-sale of beer and wine through a type 41 alcohol license for noodles pha yu located at 435 West Pacheco Boulevard. I do want to note that the cuisine proposed is generally Vietnamese. Pha is a noodle soup, um, but there will be other, um, Vietnamese cuisine also available. And that concludes my, uh, presentation.
All right. Thank you. Any, uh, discussion or questions from council? All right. Seeing none. Uh, can I get a, a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. So at this time, we're going to open the public hearing uh, to receive public comment and consideration regarding this item. Do I have anyone for the public hearing? All right. Nobody's jumping up? Okay. I can then just close? All right. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion from anyone on the council? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6602 as submitted.
And can I get a second? Councilmember Lambert?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right. All right. Okay, moving on. Uh, item 8B, which is a public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of acceptance of the Development Impact Fee Report fiscal year 2018 through 2022 in accordance with Assembly Bill 1600. And for this, we're going to go to interim finance director Kuhn.
Good evening and Happy New Year, Council, Mayor, Council Members. Um, we are back again for AB 1600. I know it wasn't too long ago that we presented, uh, 2021, but this is an annual thing, so, uh, we're now presenting 2022. Basically, the legal requirements for reporting is we give a brief discussion or description, sorry, in the report, a description of the fee, the amount of the fee. You have to show beginning and ending balances and, uh, any fees collected and interest earned during, um, th- this fiscal year of 2022. This is the fee schedule that we use for impact fees for all of the, um, categories, FIRE through, uh, 3% admin. And this, uh, is from, from a NEXUS study that was done in 2019. Um, and it's all the way through the general plan build-out. So i- if the general plan is changing and could change based upon, you know, certain factors, we, we may have to go through a NEXUS study again and go through the whole process. This is the, uh, statement of revenue expenditures and changes in, in the fund equity position. This is basically the reporting of the inflows and outflows, as I said, and, um, interest in any other types of, of funds that were, um, received. So as you can see, it, it, it shows all of the impact fee fund categories from FIRE facilities through the admin. Do you have any questions on, on this statement?
I, I don't.
Because we're now going to go into each, each individual one.
All right. Thank you.
So then every year, we have to do a finding or finding test that's required by the governmental code. It's a five-year finding and, and using all of the revenues and inflows and outflows that have happened over the past five years, we then do a kind of a waterfall, uh, calculation, starting from the oldest out to the newest in. And we, uh, see how, uh, they're deposited over a five-year period and/or expended the inflows and outflows accumulation or the fund equity, uh, if you will. And then anything after that, which is a, uh, exceeds the five-year deposit requirement, we have to do a specific finding for each one of those categories. The, uh, the, the fees that did not have any deposits held, uh, past five years were police and parks and rec. Um, all the other, uh, funds did have those deposits. Uh, and so as we go into this, we first have a description of, of each, uh, developer impact fee. And I can, I can go through each one, but FIRE facility is for design and construction of FIRE facilities. And again, all of this was, uh, set forth in the NEXUS study and it, and it brought, um, why these fees were what they were and what they were for, and it gave rationale for each one. So this is the five-year, uh, test for the FIRE facilities impact fee fund. And, um, as you can see, uh, this, as, as they, as the fees come in and out, it creates that waterfall, like I said. And in this case, this has about 254,000 that's, uh, held past the five-year mark. So we've identified what this is going to be for and it's going to be for, uh, a, a facility. It's, I think it's going to be a regional facility. We've secured 5 million in funding from the state for the construction of this, the facility. Um, the initial proposal was, uh, close to 14 and a half million. So we're looking at other ways to reduce that cost. And once we have that and we have the strategic, uh, directives from the FIRE department, we'll then be able to go forth and secure the remaining amount of that funding for that facility. The police, um, again, this was for the, uh, these are for the design and construction of police facilities that, uh, also set forth in that, uh, NEXUS study. This did not have any, uh, funds deposited and held past five years predominantly because a lot of these are going to the construction of the new police, uh, facility. Um, and as you can see in, in 21, 22, close to $3 million was expended just for that purpose. Parks and rec, again, this is for the expansion and development of parks and adds to the system of parks and recreational facilities, uh, as specified by the NEXUS study. This also did not have a five-year horizon, uh, amounts deposited past five years. Um, it could potentially, uh, next year, uh, next fiscal year, uh, get into that. But I think there's a lot of, um, projects planned for the, this, that will use impact fee funds. In fact, there's a few things tonight I think that you'll see. So, um, I believe that this one will stay, uh, outside of that five-year deposit requirement. The water facilities is again, this is for constructing key elements in the citywide water system. Includes expansion, production, storage, transmission and treatment of, and distribution of, of water within the city. This will have, uh, a five-year requirement because of the, the nature of accumulating these funds for the types of construction needed. And within that, it's the five-year, we're looking at new groundwater, um, well and tank storage. It's going through the design phase, construction in 2024. So we've identified the projects that were in the NEXUS study and where additional funding is coming from and when these are going to, uh, potentially take place. But as you can see in the next few enterprise funds, the kind of projects are pretty large. So the amount of funding also is, is in tranches. So there'll be a design tranche, there'll be a construction tranche and, and potentially a management tranche. So that's why, uh, these amounts have stayed, uh, pretty consistent in the five-year category for, for a while. And, and these are recorded as restricted cash in, in the enterprise funds because the way water, wastewater sewer work is they're supposed to operate as, as a business and not as, as a government. So they, everything has to stay within the, uh, the business fund, so to speak. Sewer, again, same as, as with water, it's elements within the wastewater system, um, collection, treatment, expansion of non-portable water facilities. Again, this has, uh, amounts that were held, uh, longer than five years. And as you can see, the expenditures for the impact side of things, we had some projects in 1718 and 1819, but then there hasn't been any for the last three years that, not, not that there hasn't been any projects, but any that are, um, specific to the impact fees. So again, there's, I, I, we identified the projects and we're identified, again, a lot of these things are, are predicated on the timing, uh, and working with the state of California and the State Water Resource Control Board, uh, to identify the timing of the fundings, as I said, the way the tranches work. And also, once they, um, enforce a compliance requirement, they then open up kind of the coffers to allow us to borrow money from them. Um, and that's why, um, it's, it's a little ambiguous in terms of the funding, but that's all predicated, like, as I said, on the state, uh, both, uh, California and the Water Resource Control Board. Storm drain works within, uh, the wastewater system and storm system for infiltration into wastewater, all of these things. Uh, again, the NEXUS study identified all of the, the need, uh, and the different areas of the city that, that would impact this. This is kind of a newer fund, um, and so the amount of fees that we're collecting from this isn't as, as much as, for instance, the water and, uh, wastewater because the facility expenses aren't, aren't as, um, as large, but they still, they still can be. So, uh, again, these, we have identified, uh, the areas that this will be impacted. A lot of this has to do also with wastewater. So there's, there's a lot of, of, um, interaction between these two impact fees. Traffic is basically, it provides, uh, transportation facilities and accommodates the increase in traffic generated by growth, a new development. Again, th- these were all identified in the NEXUS study. So as you can see here, um, there's projects, expenditures are still getting built. So these are large projects. Again, as, as you can see on the next slide, there's the 165, the 152, all of these different, uh, the Pioneer Project. So some of these have massive, um, costs and they are really, again, with the tranches, with the design and then the construction side, and then in some cases it's, it's done in phases. So we have gone out and identified the funding sources that we need for all of this. And then as we go through this, 30% of the impact fee funds get attached to these projects as we go. Here's some of the unmet need and potential funding for these. Here's some of the unmet need and potential funding for these projects. And this changes on a budgetary year. And in some cases, they open up different funding based upon the state's budget, and even there's some federal stuff as well and local. So the general government had a transformation last year where we eliminated fees but combined them all into one general governmental fee. And what we still have done is we still are tracking the fund equity position of the different fees that were collected for community center, corporate yard, city hall, public facilities. Those are still going to be used for those purposes, but they're all combined as one to show the five-year requirement, and that is here. So that's why you see old fees in the bottom there. Those are those fees, and we will track those and apply those to the various areas. And then the overall general government, as that picks up, and you can see the current year, that was all predicated on just a general government impact fee. And so we're going through, the corporate yard is one of the big areas that we had accumulation from some of the old fees, and a majority of that is being utilized for the purpose of the new corporate yard that's going next to the police facility. Three percent administrative fee is basically to administer all of these, to, you know, do the accounting and any of the compliance issues, this report, so to speak. So this, again, has these areas where we expend money and then some we don't because in terms of how these are spent, most of these are spent for the ERP system. We're moving to Tyler, which is a pretty large new ERP system and an implementation. Well, the planning phase started a couple of months ago, and they're coming in here in the next three months and the phase in on all of that. So this will handle all of the new capacity for that, some of the computer requirements and those issues. So that's what these funds are going to be used for. The final part of the impact fee report is that we have to address if there's any refunds of developer fees owed. We feel at this time that all of the fees collected pursuant to this program have been earmarked for either current or future capital projects. And these earmarked projects are necessary to maintain the current level of service and serve new development that's coming into the city. That was kind of a quick and dirty, like very fast, reporting of this. It's not the most scintillating stuff, but you guys have any questions?
So I'll kind of start with my question. Just as far as when these nexus studies are conducted and we gauge, you know, the fees, how often or how appropriate we're doing that? Because I'm looking at, you know, 2019, and I can tell you what a gallon of gas and a dozen eggs cost in 2019 versus today.
Right.
So are we assessing that, you know?
Well, it's supposed to take inflation into effect, but as we know, it's been kind of a special time period. Now, we'll see if that calms down and things change. It should escalate, well, it does. They have a whole table of things on how they escalated this and how they, because really, when they're doing this study, they have to make sure that it makes sense that they're not overcharging this and so forth. So if we start seeing this becoming a problem, so new development has about 30% when they come in that gets attached to this, the other goes out. If we're unable to meet the requirements of new development coming in, in essence, mitigate the impact, then we'll go through this nexus study again. I think we went through one in '06 and then and again in '19. So it's a big spread. We're in the process of changing our general plan. So if it doesn't make sense when we look back at this nexus, we may have to go back to the tables and have the consultants come back and revisit this, yes.
Okay. But so in other words, it's constantly on your radar as far as what you're...
Yes, yes. So if we're seeing, you know, the funds being completely decimated, or for instance, we're going to have to go through a rate study for all of our fees, our enterprises, water fees, because we have these big, big issues in the horizon, but we're not quite sure what it's going to be and what it's going to cost. That, though, we still have to bake into these some of those assumptions. So they baked in some of these assumptions in terms of what we showed them our general plan is, but there's a lot that's changing, yeah. So you may see a request for budget amendment to have them come in and review this after we finish with the general plan.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in these nexus studies, we have laws that are passed practically every day in the state of California and some at the national level that may affect us. Is that being taken into consideration because the laws may tell you by the year 25 or 2030, you've got to have this done?
Yeah, usually the laws take...
You may have to have a sewer system in place.
Yeah.
You may have to have this.
So you're dealing with different bodies. So you have the Water Resource Board that will determine if, you know, we're contaminating or we're taking a draft or we're, you know, anything that is going to make our water supply unstable, then they may say, hey, you need to do this. The state of California has their own requirements. Now, they usually only pass laws, and those laws begin like on a calendar year. In fact, Mr. Vaughn just gave us a bunch of new laws that are coming into effect this year to keep a surprise of those things. So yes, and we're constantly in communication with the different entities and those governing, whether it's, the state ultimately governs pretty much everything, but they disseminate some of that control to local agencies or water boards, for instance. So yes, we're constantly monitoring. That's why we're trying to figure out, like some of these things, they said, well, you need to do this, but they haven't given us an implementation plan. And if we don't have an implementation plan, we don't have a cost allocation that will be what it costs to implement that plan. And in some cases, there's a lot of negotiation going on, right? Because you can't just say, here, city, you know, we want you to spend $250 million to clean this water because we think that you're going to do that. No one can do that. So they're going to either have to open up funding to help with that, and we'll match in some requirements. And they're not going to do that until they know that they have their budget squared away and so forth. I don't know, am I answering your question?
Well, I mean, it's logical, but whether that truly will happen or not is another thing, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Right.
There are a lot of mandates that come down
Yes.
from the state of California, and there's no money following it, and it lies on the backs of local government.
They don't usually do that, though. When they mandate, they usually have a state mandated funding program for those mandates. So we get reimbursed. It's not a one-to-one basis reimbursement. There'll be some matching requirements. But in some cases, if they're forcing us to do, unless we've done something negligent, then, you know, they're going to help us out because, you know, they know that they can issue bonds. So usually, when they do these massive mandates, it'll be on the back of probably a pretty large bond issued by the state of California so that they have that money in their coffers that they can disseminate out to local agencies.
And again, that's ideal. And I'll give you an example. Fresno, the city of Fresno, and the mayor had to go to Sacramento to show the plan for homelessness and what they have done and the percentage of what they've been able to do based on the monies that they had.
Right.
And so the governor had locked up all the money for the state of California in regards to homelessness and funding for housing. But Fresno managed to be able to prove that they were doing something, so they released funds to them.
Right.
So that's the kind of thing I'm talking about.
Yeah.
You know, the mandates come down, and there may be money there.
Yeah.
But depending on who's in there and how they feel, that money may not come down.
But using Fresno is a great example, right? They just did a massive infrastructure update of water, wastewater, and because the state was bringing out a lot of things in terms of what they were doing. They had a lot of contamination, they had remediation and other things, and they were kind of forced to do things a little earlier. But the state opened up a credit line for them at a pretty low interest rate, and they made sure that there was feasibility within, you know, the rates that they're charging. So on the enterprise side of things, there's a little bit more flexibility in terms of how things can be done because it's a rate-based, it's not a tax-based system. You still have to go and you have to do, you know, 218 requirements and things of that nature whenever you do this. But when you're dealing with the state, you're always in a negotiation capacity, right? So if they're forcing you to do something, it's not like you don't have any leverage at all with them because you do, but you just have to get in front of that. So they decided to, they were only really mandated to do one section, but they decided to go forward and do the whole system. And, I mean, they issued, I think, close to $300 million of state loans to do all of these things. And there were some things with the airport, too, that they did. And there's things that we've done that they are now, well, they participated, we're now participating, like I Bank and things that are backed by the state. They give you low interest rate, and then they also have timing for revenue feasibility. So there's all of these things that we're looking at to make sure, one, that we're not caught, you know, with the proverbial pants down and just sitting there stunned. We are constantly assessing, okay, well, if the mandate's going to come in 18 months, then we have to go through this process of addressing fees and getting it out there so the residents don't get, you know, all of a sudden surprised with a massive water bill increase. So it's diligence, right, that you have to. In regards to the developer impact fees, it's a constant negotiation with developers in terms of things that they're going to do. These are general impact. You can also have developer agreements to have them pay for things. So that's how it works. Now, with the homeless, it's a little different because I think that would take, that's a very competitive area for any funds, and they must have did a really good job of presenting something that was pretty unique to just them.
Well, we'll kind of just stay on task as far as the developer impact fees.
Yes.
Eating elephants in one bite at a time at this point, but yes.
That was an example. It wasn't meant to take us off track. It was an example of how, you know, things operate in the state
Right.
and how monies are distributed
Right.
and who's in line for what.
Yes, totally.
All right. Any other questions, counsel, regarding this matter? All right. So at this time, we will open this public forum. The public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of acceptance of the development impact fee report for fiscal years 2018 through 2022 in accordance with Assembly Bill AB 1600. So if we have anybody here to talk about that? No? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public forum. All right. And the recommendations received, staff report, and close the public hearing, and then accept the report as submitted. Do I need a motion for that? All right. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lewis? Oh, sorry, you were still up.
Oh, I'm sorry. You were waiting for me. I think you forgot to turn my light off.
All right, no worries. Councilmember Jones, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to accept the report as or make a motion to accept the report as submitted.
All right. And then I have Councilmember Lambert?
Second.
Second by Lambert. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. All right, moving on to item nine, pickleball courts, project update. This is Public Works Director and City Engineer Chan.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So I have with me here today Mr. Joe Heim. He's our Parks and Recreation Operation Manager. He's been working a lot with these projects. We actually went through a couple of processes. Typically, for a project or CIP project like this, we usually go through a couple of public forum processes. In this case, we have gone through the Park and Recreation, present kind of the conceptual plan, the budgets, and now we are coming back with those conceptual plan based on the comment that we received from Park and Recreation, and we want to share that with you and also gather some more information and direction from council as to what to do next. But typically, for a project like this, once we get direction from council defining the scope of the project, we can then start the environmental process. Once the environment process are complete, we present that back to council to accept that secret document, and then we proceed to the final design phase, and that leads to the construction phase of the project. So currently, we are still on track. If the project scopes are to remain the same, and aside from the budgetary issues, we can continue to move forward in this fiscal year. But I'll let Joe go over more in detail.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. It's good to meet some of you here from a distance, I guess. My name's Joe Heim. I'm the Parks and Rec Operations Manager. And as Neron just said, I'll be providing an update on the pickleball project. And slide here. So just a little bit of history. I know it was talked about a little bit in the public forum, but for those not familiar with pickleball, it's a racket paddle sport. It's played on court similar to tennis courts. Hopefully, some of you have seen some of the players at the community center. There's also some courts at the racket club, and we have some courts painted on a basketball court at Crest Hills Park presently. So pickleball was something that has been highly requested from the public. We did have a Parks Master Plan process a couple of years ago, and it was heavily identified during that process as well as several other public meetings that we've had. So just to kind of touch on pickleball, again, it's a sport that's really primarily for ages 10 plus, but we've seen, as mentioned, anybody from young adults to seniors play pickleball. It's something that's rapidly growing both locally and nationally. I know that it was touched on a little bit locally in terms of how much the pickleball group here has grown, but nationally, it's also rapidly growing. It's, as the slide says, well-known as the fastest-growing sport in America, as well as we're seeing facilities. It's probably the number one thing in Parks and Rec right now being constructed nationwide. And just, you know, as an example, we're seeing complexes about tripling over the next year nationwide. So there's a lot of communities that are invested in this. I believe Fresno is just completing some courts. And additionally, just looking at the local, Los Banos environment, you know, we don't have a golf course, we don't have a swimming pool, we don't have quality tennis courts. And so this is something that can provide a recreation, active recreation amenity for adults and seniors in the community. And as well, just going back to the Parks Master Plan, one of the things that was really identified was the need and desire for specialized park amenities. I think if you go through our community, you'll see a lot of parks, you see a lot of neighborhood parks, and it's fantastic to provide playgrounds, basketball courts, things like that throughout the community and hopefully at a walking distance. But providing things like dog parks, skate parks, pickleball courts, those are things that were really highly demanded during that process. And, you know, I regularly received those comments from the public working over at the community center. Thanks. Yeah. So here's just a couple of pictures of, just some examples. Pickleball courts can be painted in a lot of different colors. They can look a lot, they can have benches between them, they can have stadium seating, all sorts of different setups, but just kind of a quick picture of what pickleball courts look like, very similar to tennis courts. So as we entered spring 2022, an opportunity came up, which was the American Rescue Act, American Rescue Plan Act funding. And what made this so critical was that it didn't impact Parks and Rec funding that we have available through, say, the Measure H or through Park Development Fund. And so as that became available and as we identified some available funding for a possible pickleball project, we began looking at possible locations. So we had a lot of variables to consider. We're looking for space for between six and 16 courts. We wanted to consider noise impacts, and we wanted to consider the readiness of the project construction. One of the things that we wanted to prioritize was a project that was ready, both from the standpoint of the demand of pickleball as well as the need to get ARPA projects out and completed. As we look through our local parks and developed areas, the challenge became, we have a lot of acreage in parks that is basin or next to residential homes. Pickleball is a sport that does receive noise complaints. You know, it's a paddle hitting a plastic ball, and that can be bothersome to neighbors at a close distance. So that's something we definitely wanted to consider, as well as, again, the size of courts and the supporting amenities. So as we went through our park system, looking for ready sites, Crest Hills seemed to keep popping up and keep popping up. And so we did bring that to the Parks and Rec Commission as well as put it in our 2023 budget for City Council's review. Crest Hills was identified as a suitable location, and there was park acreage available there. there. So we decided, we determined that about six courts could be constructed at Crest Hills Parks. This would replace an existing volleyball court, but it would not impact the current, there's currently two back, sorry, one backstop for a tee ball field, as well as two basketball courts on site, in addition to the parking lot, shade arbor, and playground on site. So, yeah, so the project identified fencing, lighting, and a connecting sidewalk as supporting amenities for the six courts, and we'll show you a design here in a minute. There would be an impact to the neighborhood's usage. Thankfully, there is a parking lot on site. However, there is no restroom as part of the park currently, as well as we are not requesting that at this time. So there is some impact there, as well as, you know, we want to identify that the pickleball courts were parallel with the basketball courts, which, again, I'll show you in a concept map here in a second. So we did bring the item to the Parks and Rec Commission, as well as council, and ended up with a preliminary estimate of $600,000, which includes a design and construction of six pickleball courts. I'll show you a couple of concept maps here. So this is the present conditions on site. You can see that where that green dot is, is the volleyball court that would be replaced. You also see some cottonwood trees. That's an older photo, so I think there are two or three of those have been removed since, but there's some older cottonwood trees that would be impacted as well. Right there, there's a row of them that you can see in that bird's eye view. So if you see this early conceptual design here, you can see that it is overlapping those trees in that volleyball court and parallel with the basketball court. This is showing those trees in that volleyball court. So here's our latest conceptual design of the courts. Again, it's parallel with those basketball courts along Pioneer Road. You'll see fencing, gate entrances, benches between every two courts, as well as you'll see a connecting sidewalk that connects the parking lot side all the way through and past the pickleball courts to the basketball courts, and then there's a connecting pathway that connects to the playground area. So just getting into the budget standpoint and where the project stands as of now, in August 2022, city staff assigned design and engineering services to Cowal Landscape Architecture. And in October 2022, Cowal provided a cost estimate of probable construction costs that significantly exceeded the available budget of $600,000. We did bring the item as an update to the Parks and Rec Commission just shortly after receiving that estimate, and we primarily focused on discussion about prioritizing the inclusion of amenities, the quality of amenities, and trying to determine if there were any amenities in the project that could be reduced or altered in some way. So the members of the public and the Parks and Rec Commission emphasized the importance of including elements such as post-tension concrete surfacing, lighting, and fencing. We did find that the surfacing, post-tension concrete surfacing and lighting were by far the most significant cost as part of this project. And staff does recommend having post-tension concrete surfacing, as well as lighting. This is due to a number of reasons. So the alternative would be asphalt surfacing. We do currently have asphalt surfacing at the tennis courts at Colorado Ballpark. Those have unfortunately been deteriorated, and it's something that requires resurfacing about every seven to 10 years, which is a pretty significant investment to take care of those courts as well. Just relating to lighting, it's something that is very much going to cost more after the fact, after, if these courts were built and we were going afterwards, it would be an escalated cost. So it's just something for staff and council to consider in terms of some of the amenities that are included in this. There are amenities such as benches, but these are just a minor part of the greater project. So at this time, there is, I'll just, yeah, getting the highlight of some of the items here, we did include fencing gates, drinking fountain, benches, windscreen, and as you can see, lighting, electrical, there's a small portion for irrigation and potable water, which would include a drinking fountain and the ability to wash down the courts. So what we're looking for is direction from City Council tonight. We have three options that staff has proposed to proceed with the current design, including all amenities. As shown, this would include post-tension concrete, lighting, and all the amenities included, and that would require an additional $73,140, which, again, the current budget is $600,000, so that would put the project over $1 million. Option two would be to reduce the scope to only include basic and essential features. The budget amendment for this would still be required, which would be about $233,276. And then the third option is to just review the project, whether that be another location or other general discussion from City Council tonight. This is obviously a project that's very popular in town, and, you know, obviously, we want to see it continue moving forward, but we wanted to review the project with City Council tonight. Appreciate any comments. Thank you.
All right. Let's start with some questions. Want to have any questions? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a breakdown of the cost of the project, which is $1,342,000 and some change. And you have the cost difference based on what council had set aside in budget, but under option number two, where would the reduction be?
So in option two, we would be including only basic and essential features. This option will eliminate site furnishings, which is $51,000, site furnishings, things like benches, trash cans, things like that. Landscaping, which is, if you go back to that conceptual map, you'll see some green around the Pioneer side of the park there and on some of the edges, just to keep it clean there, that would be $93,000. And then lighting and electrical, which would, again, obviously be the lighting there available for the courts at $310,000. This would also reduce in the scope for the design services, which is also built into that estimate, which is $40,000.
Okay. And the potable water would be for irrigation?
The potable water would be for a drinking fountain, as well as the ability to hook up to a spigot to hose down the courts from time to time as dust and other materials collect.
I can see the water for hosing down the courts, but I don't know if there's anybody in this audience that would drink out of a public fountain, so I could see that being a possibility of elimination.
Yeah.
For cost. And the other question I have is, where would the remainder of the money come from?
So at this time, we would be trying to target ARPA funding. That's one of my personal biggest concerns, is the funding aspect of it and the impact that it might have on other park-related funds. The reason why I bring that concern up is because we do have other projects, such as Colorado or Pacheco, that may have significant costs within, you know, the next several years in terms of renovating some of those locations and being strategic about how we set aside funding for that. But for this amendment here, it would be seeking from ARPA.
Okay. All right. Well, you know, with that, with what you've just shared with us, I think it would be reasonable for us, if we're looking at building these courts, is to build them and then maybe add on some of the necessary things, the lighting. I could see maybe having that if they want to have the games in the evening time, or maybe not necessarily night. I don't know how that's going to work out, but I just, you know, I just think some of these things, we may have to look at eliminating and maybe bring them on at a later date as we can budget them in, as we go down the line, based on the projects that we already have in line that need to have remodeling and updates done to them. So that's just my take on the project. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to look at a little bit different aspect here. There's nothing on the south side of town by Pioneer. I can see, yeah, putting a couple courts out there, but have, I am at the point right now where we need to start looking at what we're going to build up, like everybody said, on the rail trail. Six courts? I don't think that's enough to bring competition here. I, myself, would rather look at a new review as soon as possible, possibly out here just west, or just west of the Henry Plaza on our rail trail. Not only that, if we can get them built there, and just like we've heard from the citizens, like they said, if you build it, they will come. If we only build six courts out on Pioneer Road, you're going to get people to go out there and play. We're not going to get any competition. There's not enough courts. So we're not going to bring no revenue to the city either. Not only, so if we can get some courts, if we can get up to 12 courts built, and I say it's going to probably take at least 12 courts. There's also things that is going to benefit the rest of us also. Advertising on the fences, different throughout the city. I watch enough on the TV, and just like they were talking about on TV, and it's almost every other commercial, you will see a pickleball court or someone playing on a pickleball court on TV. This might be something that we can look forward to, look towards as possibly being something that's going to bring Los Banos maybe a little sooner to the map, you know, if we put 12 courts out here. I think we need to look at another, possibly get another review for it. I can understand maybe putting a couple courts out there, not six, just maybe so for maybe the west side to be practiced, while these are maybe being utilized, you can practice out there. But for me, to spend that money, that one point, whatever it was, 1. something million, I'd rather put that money towards being, towards at least 12 courts or whatever we can get on the rail trail. I just see more, we can get more out of that on the rail trail than I would over here.
Yeah. We did receive quite a few comments about six courts being insufficient. I personally have not looked at the Bay Street corridor option there close enough to know what the variables might be on that. Obviously, moving locations would, you know, delay the project from the standpoint of surveys and things like that, but certainly something that we could review.
But the dirt over there, I mean, I believe that is actually a little bit more, almost dirt-ready to start the process. No trees, I mean, very minimal removal of certain things. I'm not for, if you want to put a couple courts there, so maybe we can go down that lane, but if this is, option three is review for the other, a new project, I'd rather go with review for another project right now. To me, I'd rather spend $1 million on a court that's going to be, that's going to be beneficial for the city and something that's just going to grow up and not be maintained, or something that's not going to get utilized the way we need to utilize it.
Thank you.
That's where I stand.
Counsel, if I may real quick, too, in regards to costs, there is potential cost saving as you are increasing the number of courts because it's economy of scales, right? You're going to get a little bit more square foot, more dollar for your square footage of cost. However, as we continue to increase, let's say doubling the size, you're probably going to end up having to up that 1.3 to closer to 2 millions, just to get that more square footage.
I totally agree, but I think if we're going to start anywhere, I believe we need to start, you know, we need to start now. I mean, we want to, we want to do something with the rail trail instead of just letting the rail trail sit. I mean, now isn't the time to start doing that. I mean, we got other things we'd like to put out there. Water park, you know, that's going to be, it could be something that we can bring together. But I think that's where I want to start.
And secondly, on that note, too, is that as we are making decisions in term of what's to put and what amenity and stuff like that, typically, you know, anything can be done with, you know, with the funding that you have, right? But the problem is, is as you are building in more compartmentalized, say you build a court first, and then you want to come back and redo the lighting, a lot of time, all those trenching and stuff like that will impact the existing courts. Just for, for instance, some of our repair that we are doing at some of our lift stations, originally, when we built it, it was $300,000, but now that we're coming in adding backup generators and stuff like that, that cost alone was $120,000, just for that kind of add-on. And unfortunately, that's just the reality of compartmentalized at the projects. And based on the ARPA funding, there is a sunset date to when we need to plan the project. So if you miss those dates to plan the project to include all those funding, you might miss the opportunity to spend that in ARPA and have to look at other funding sources for those amenities.
And at this point, there are a considerable amount of ARPA funds that have not been programmed. So if this is something, and also the area that you're looking, there's expansion, I think, to the, is that the north?
Yeah.
The north of that. So there's a lot of flexibility for this, and the ARPA funds, they don't go away. We already have the funds. It's just, you just have to spend them, and we will. So, but I think they're, like, last time we went through and looked at ARPA, I think there is close to 2.5, 2.7 that's still unprogrammed out of ARPA. So that's another, that's another conversation, once you guys figure out what you're doing with this, that I can come back and present exactly what that looks like.
Well, I look at it, I'm like this, I mean, we want to benefit the city also, and the way to build, to benefit the city is if we do build 12 courts, we're going to have competitions, I'm sure, quite a few throughout the summer, and then maybe all year round. So this is, not only will, if we get it built, it will also benefit the city also, because it's going to bring outside people in to our city.
Yeah.
That's where I stand. That, you know, not much more I can say.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Either one of you have?
I do agree with Councilmember Lambert. Other than, it seems like council's been playing Monday night quarterback for the last seven months, because we don't have a permanent city manager in here that can look at the total aspect of the ARPA money across all the projects that we have going on. And this rail trail location, which I think would be great, it would have to be master planned first, so we know exactly what we're doing, and so it does take a little bit more time, is going to cost a little bit more money. And right now, I think it's best for us to table it until we get our permanent city manager in here to take a full look at everything, not just one little sliver of this equation here. So that's where I stand on this.
Go ahead. Councilmember Begone?
Yeah. I, I don't want to see something built that's just not what, up to the quality or, I mean, these six courts off in the corner of that park, that's fine, but I just really want to see something built with quality that people will continue to use for years and makes them proud and will hold tournaments. I don't know who's in charge of running tournaments, but for pickleball, but I'm sure that person will, you know, bring in the crowds and get it up to scope. And also, I, you know, with that, will there be opportunity to, would you play cornhole on the courts or build something, you know, I know that you, someone said that about playing cornhole tournaments, because that's very popular, too, now. Would it be played on the courts, or would you have to build something separate?
I think it would be some, sorry, I don't mean to speak for the group, but do you want to step up again?
Yeah.
Well, cornhole is portable.
Okay.
So they put it up wherever they want to put it up. If we had an extra court left over, we could, man, you could do a lot of cornhole.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know how popular that sport is, too.
So if you rent something together like that for a fundraiser for some kind of event, if somebody wants to rent the place to do a fundraiser, that's something that you do, that way you're having more than just one event and include a lot more people.
No, both the sports are, I know they're very popular, and, you know, anyone can claim, you don't have to be a professional athlete to go out there and do an awesome job. So it really is for all the community, and I'd love to see the community be able to benefit from that.
I think they both, one thing about pickleball nationally, and we've seen it locally, is that it's a sport that really creates that social circle, and I think cornhole is the same type of impact.
All right, we'll go to Councilmember Lewis and then Jones.
I'm asking the city attorney to refresh my memory on all the project on the land on the rail trail. Is that land been turned over to the city for governance, or do we actually own it? Or if we don't own it, do, if we purchase it, do we have to divide monies up between different types of agency, school board, special districts, what have you?
The Henry Miller piece is one big piece from, I believe it's Seventh Street to Fourth Street, and only a portion of it is governmental use, the rest is for future development. And what that means is we have essentially split ownership with eight other taxing entities that have an interest in those properties, and so if we wanted to do something exclusive of selling it to development for tax purposes, we'd have to purchase it from the other entities. There is a small, and I There is a small, and I don't have the picture in my mind now, but there's a small portion of that overall property that can be used for governmental use, but I don't know that it's big enough for 12 pickleball courts. And we kind of planned that so that we could move that governmental use area within the larger area. But we had originally had indicated that it would be on the corner of Seventh and High Street.
Eight.
Eighth Street, sorry. And so I'm not sure exactly what the size of that governmental use portion of it is. We'd have to take a look at the maps to determine. But yes, there are, there are some issues with who, who's the actual control of the ownership in terms of development or governmental use. So we would have to take a look at that, and you'd have to figure that into the cost as well, if there was a cost of purchasing the land from the other entities. The city currently owns 18% of the development parcels, and then there are nine other entities that own the rest of it. The largest entities being the County Merced and the Los Mas Unified School District, who might like to chip in and donate their portion for recreational activities at that location. I don't know. So it's something that would require some looking into and some research and some figuring and possibly some talking with our other partners who own that property to try to figure out.
Whereas we outright own the property on Pioneer.
Crestles Park.
Well, yeah, we own Crestles Park. So we don't have, those issues aren't present at Crestles Park.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes. The thing that I'd like to try to get going in the short term is kind of like a design committee with the pickleball community. So basically, a team of the experts that know what they want, know what they like, that can help us pick the design elements when we get to that point, and help us, kind of point us in the right direction of what they need in their facility. So.
Makes sense. All right, my turn, I guess. So I've done actually a little bit of homework on pickleball. It sounds weird to say I've been Googling pickleball. You know, originally, I'll tell you just my why. Originally, I looked at Crestles Park as the ideal situation, right? An ideal place. And, but I was looking at probably more from a public safety standpoint, right? The amount of the homeless population and crime and things like that. But also realized that, you know, this is our city. It doesn't belong to criminals. And, you know, when people come in and are passionate about something and flood the council chambers, I'm like, hey, we want to play, here's where we want to play. You know, that speaks volumes, right? And so I don't want to just build something that's just gonna get it done for now, right? If we're gonna invest money, let's just do it right. The other thing is, I look at it from a business aspect, and I look at things like return on investment. If people are gonna come from out of town, do they really want to hang out at Crestles Park? No offense to Crestles Park, but would they rather be downtown and eat at local restaurants and shop at our places and, you know, have those amenities as far as, you know, learning more about our city and also, you know, spending money while they're in our city? They're not gonna spend money at Crestles Park. They're gonna probably spend money downtown or in that, that general area. So my, you know, my, my kind of thing would be to, to table it and come back with, you know, a better design. Hearing that we have the money is a great thing, and that we have those options, and so we're not constricted with that. Because again, I look at it as a return on investment. If we spend, you know, a million and a half dollars on something and it brings a flood of people to come spend money in our city, then so be it. We spent the money to make it, and I'm okay with that. And also too, we rarely talk about amenities in this city. So to hear us talk about amenity is, I think is great, and that's what people want. And so that's, that's our job to do that. So I would say we would table it and maybe ask for an updated plan. I definitely like the idea of, of the players, the people that are gonna use this amenity, having the most input as far as what, what that plan would look like. Anyone else? No? So our options are, proceed the staff report and direction of council, how to proceed. Do we have those, those three options? Do I have a motion? Someone want to make a motion?
I think the direction of the staff was for staff to come back.
Okay, okay. Yep. So we don't even need to vote on that. I like that. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you, guys. All right, item 10, update solar procurement for the community center and the wastewater treatment plant through Peninsula Clean Energy Partnership. I'd go to our public works director for this.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I apologize. I'm kind of a little bit on the short ends, a little hard to see. But anyway, so this is just an update on our solar power purchase agreements that was presented to council back in April 20th. So we just want to provide you a little bit more updates on where we were and what were the term of the, the agreement was, and what are some of the negotiated price that as a result of the negotiation with, between PCE as well as the contractor or the proposer for this project. So just a little background, on February 16th, council adopted a motion for staff to explore solar options at various city facilities. The community center electricity consumption has been a significant increase in March 2022. So after our further analysis, it, with PG&E, with PG&E as well as PCE, we determined that community center and the wastewater treatment plan was the best candidate for solar projects. On April 20th, staff presented to council a pilot solar program. So we worked with PG&E and determined, with PCE and determined that they just happened to be at that time have a pilot programs that would be available to governmental agency to participate in, called the Power Purchase Agreement models. This model was essentially allowed the JPA, which is PCE, to procure, to go through the RFP process to procure a contractor as well as the, the solar materials itself and install it and maintain it at their own cost, and it allowed them to offer us to purchase the electricity generate from those facility at a reduced cost below the PG&E standards rate. As a result of that meeting, council adopted resolution 6490, authorizing city managers to deploy the systems at the community center and wastewater treatment plants through the PPA model if he or she determined that the project result in a financial or community benefits. So since then, again, this is kind of just the, an overview, a little bit of the PPA models. As you can see, the PPA facility, which is owned by various governmental agency, in this case, it's 11 different jurisdictions, would be partnering or going into an agreement, a PPA agreement with PCE, and allowing PCE to then do the procurement process for those jurisdictions. And the benefit of this is that the city staff would not have to do a lot of oversight, the engineering, the design portion of this, and it will be eventually a turnkey project for the cities to receive then the reduced cost in electricity generations. So the overall process for this, essentially, we start out with the site visit, the preliminary site plan, looking at all the various different facility, go through the different iteration with staff, and then go to the final plan. We are now at that final plan stage because from a programmatic level, PCE has already go through the procurement process. As of June of this year, or July of this year, they already started the RFP. The RFP went to public bidding and advertisement process for a total of a month. They received nine proposal from various different company and gone through the scoring criteria process and selected one firms. So we are now, they have also gone through to select that one firms and went through the negotiation process to be able to provide us the informations tonight. So, so far, after all of this now, PCE has continued to work with all those other jurisdictions. Out of all the jurisdictions, only ones actually step out of the program, and that mainly for the city of San Mateo, that because ones, they determined that they actually have a problem with their roof membrane that could not accommodate or receive the solar panels. So they actually have to do some improvement process before they can do the projects, and that's why they, they are not moving forward the project. The rest of the cities are moving forwards and are reviewing those agreement terms you are tonight. Again, so this slide is just to show you what we were estimated back when we present to you back in April 20th, and the actual cost that was negotiated between PCE and the vendors. So right now, the actual cost that we see is gonna be for .147s or 14 cents, about 15 cents per kilowatt hour for the community centers, and then just about 18 cents per kilowatt hour for the wastewater treatment plan. This is a little bit lowers than the estimate that were provided. The estimate was based on, you know, the pricing that was pre-pandemic and whatnot. But they actually get a pretty good negotiation point with the contractor that they had with, and they also had a different state provisional, federal provision that allow PCE to actually procure the solar panel directly from the vendor, which allowed them to actually save quite a bit on the project itself. Now, the one major difference from what we presented to you back in April to now is the cost escalations. Back in April, there was an assumptions that there is a lot of management costs, and because that, that federal credits for the actual direct negotiation with the solar supplier was not there, there was a cost escalation of 1% year over year. With this, a new credits or capability to negotiate with the supplier, they get a better pricings for the solar panel. So that cost escalation is removed. So the contract now for those two PPA rate that you see will not change for the life of the agreement. Okay? And the agreement term itself will be for 20 years. There is an options or provision for the city to extend that 20 years by a five-year increment twice over a total of 30 years if the city elects to. If not, at the end of that 20-year periods, the, that the contract would terminate, and then the seller, which would be PCE and the contractor, would remove those infrastructure from our facility and return it back to its previous conditions. And again, the contract price will not be having any escalations. Right now, we will stay current with that 17 cents for the community center and 14 cents for the wastewater treatment plan. In comparisons, I put it in parentheses down below, what we actually paying right now for our community center as well as our wastewater treatment plan. As part of the agreement, again, this is more like a turnkey project. So PCE will be managing the design, the installation, operation, and maintenance of this project. And the city responsibility was to pay on those reduced rate with PCE. Now, there is some concerns on the maintenance and stuff because just like any other infrastructures, on a yearly basis, there is routine maintenance as well as this emergency maintenance. In the term of the agreements, there are an allowable 48 daylight hours on the system that it could go into those routine maintenance or emergency. Otherwise, there are some compensation provision that is on there for, for, for our evaluations. Now, just like any other assets, there is a lot of upfront capital cost. So once we are signed into this agreement, PCE and the vendor would actually have a lot of capital costs that they have to put upfront. So therefore, if we decide, you know, in year one that this is not for us and we want to eliminate that facility, there will be a termination payments. So as you can see, the longer that we stayed on the, the agreement, the more, the less cost it is for those terminations. And again, at 20-year, at the end of the 20 years, when we're done, there will be no terminations payment. So that's kind of the end of my update. Again, this is for informational items, and if you have any clarifications or questions, I'll be happy to answer this.
Okay. Do we, do we have any questions in council? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. Okay, so we have this escalate our, the, oh, wait, to the page. The termination pay, payment schedule for the water waste treatment, it comes to about 12 million, almost 13 million dollars. And for the community center, almost 10 million, which is almost 23 million if I round it up. That's just for the equipment and the use of it.
Yeah, so, so this is not cumulative. So what it mean is that if you were to terminate the, the contract at year one, you would pay the termination cost of 1.1 million dollars. And then if you were to terminate it at, for example, year number 10, you would only pay the 666,000 dollars.
I got it. Okay. So when, when, in the, first, the second paragraph, when you talk about at cost for the kilowatt hours of usage, is it the same as the residential that we would only get a 5% reduction on whatever the PG&E rate is?
No, so, so our rate would be the, the 14 cents or the 17 cents. So it actually locked in, in that PPA. It, it does not relied on PG&E rate. So if PG&E were to increase their rate year over year, our PPA would stay the same, would be fixed. And that's how we generate the, the cost saving, as you can see in the staff reports. The wastewater treatment plan in a simple interest 20-year, we could see at 1.8 million dollars saving. That is factored in the 5% year-over-year increase of PG&E rate, because we are fixed with the PPA and we're generating our own electricity. So there would be no increase in cost there.
Okay. And do, do we know what we're paying per kilowatt right now?
Yes. So for the wastewater treatment plan, it is, have to be averaged it out just because, you know, there are a little bit of different rates and peak hour use and whatnot. We are averaging for the wastewater treatment plan at about 20 cents per kilowatt hours, and then about 30 cents for the community center.
Okay. All right. Okay. So the cost of the, basically, this, this schedule will cover the cost of the equipment that they have to take it down in whatever segment years?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see if I have anything else. The, if they cannot meet a repair within 48 daylight hours, and daylight hours, is, is there something in the contract that tells us what that is? Is it like from a certain hour?
Yeah, for when the solar panel will be able to generate power. So say if the sunrise is at seven o'clock, that would be your start of the hours.
Okay, okay. I think that's probably it that I have. Okay, thank you very much.
So basically, a lot of this works the same as a residential lease would be on a, on a solar type system. With that being said, is there anything comparable to a, let's say a TRUP bill or generation bill or anything like that? Are we gonna have any of that costs?
No.
No. So it's just straight from, okay. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I think this is a no-brainer. It seems like, starting off the bat, the wastewater treatment plan will be saving roughly about 26% per kilowatt, and on the community center, roughly 41-plus percent there. So I mean, it's, it's easy savings.
Well, I do have one other question. For the city manager, after we get this installed, if we vote on this, can we have like a report back maybe in about six months or so as to whether or not we're on track with, with what the estimate has been for kilowatt?
Sure, absolutely. And I believe Peninsula Clean Energy would be happy, PCE would be happy to also partner with us on our presentation, and staff could provide that information. So after installation, we will program maybe six months or so at the pleasure of the council to bring a report back on, on the actuals that are happening out there.
All right, thank you.
Just, just for clarifications, that's six months after the systems go into operations, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, I agree. It seems like a, a no-brainer. And whoever, you know, negotiated this deal, nice work, because yeah, that's, I mean, that's easy cost savings right there. So, okay, on this item here, no action to be taken, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's move on to item 11. It's gonna be the appointment of commissioners to the following commissions. 11A, be the Airport Advisory Commission, two, two-year terms, expiring December 31st, 2024. Told to go to our city clerk. She.
And Dave Anderson. I just need a motion.
So you make a motion. All right. So I make a motion to nominate Mr. Leonardo and Mr. Anderson for the Airport Advisory Commission for the two-year terms. Second by Lambert. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations. And then item B is Parks and Recreation Commission. These are two, two-year terms, expiring December 31st, 2024. This is a motion to appoint Brad Gargano and Shamar Pierce to our Parks and Recreation Commission. Can I get a second? Councilmember Begonia?
A second. The motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then item C, Planning Commission, one, four-year term in District Three, expiring December 31st, 2026. I will make a motion to appoint Commissioner John Kates. Can I get a second? Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that.
Second by Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right. And then item 12, advisement of public notices. For this, we'll go to interim city manager, Elms?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So one public item, public hearing item, this is for a site plan review. This is a self-storage facility that'll be located in the industrial zoning district. It's located on 9.17 acres at the northeast corner of Johnson Road and Wilmot Avenue. The project will consist of about 56,271 square feet, and the Wilmont Avenue. The project will consist of about 56,271 square feet. And the public hearing will be held Wednesday, January 11 at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to item 13, we're going to stick with interim City Manager Elms on the on the job for a short time, but see if she has a report.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council, for the appointment. I'm honored and excited to fill in and hold down the fort for this time being. And a part of this report, I do want to give an update to the council on the homeless encampment. The closure and cleanup of the current encampment off of Gilbert Gonzalez Junior Drive was originally scheduled for January 5, but due to the weather, it has been scheduled, it has been postponed for the week of the 18. So notifications to the encampment have begun. They began with our code enforcement division of our police department on December 19. And then other notices will be happening, and that will be 72 hours prior to the closure cleanup, which will happen on now on January 15. And then a second item to bring to the council's attention and to the public, it relates to the weather and this intense storm that we will be experiencing in the next, today and tomorrow, and possibly into the weekend. So Merced County did activate their Level 3 EOC, their Emergency Operations Center, and that was at 8:00 AM today. The state of California also proclaimed the state of emergency to support local agencies. So agencies on the central coast, in the central valley, throughout California, to provide resources to agencies such as ourselves. So the city of Las Maniz, we are prepared to open our Emergency Operations Center. We've been putting all of our ducks in a row. Our fire chief, Toala, has been busy. He has prepared an incident action plan. So in addition to that, we are working with our partner water districts to coordinate flood control. We had a meeting this afternoon with the police department, fire department, Public Works, and it was to coordinate with those water districts so that we could all be on the same page. That's with the Central California Irrigation District, Grasslands Water District, and the San Joaquin River Exchange Contractors. So just great participation and coordination with our partners to just to be able to prepare for an event that we will be experiencing. So we are watching the Las Maniz Creek. We're watching those levels. We're watching the flows that the Bureau of, well, that the State Department of Water Resources is releasing down into the creek. But I do, if I can, real briefly, if Chief Toala, if you can just let us know, so we're at basically a Level 3 EOC that we, which is somewhat activated, but if you can explain that and what we're preparing to do.
So what we've done with the Level 3 activation, we activated our, part of our first operations folks. So we have operations and our planning sections activated right now. So we've developed this an action plan that we can build upon should we start having or having to deal with some incidents within the city. We also have coordinated with County OES, where myself and Acting Chief Raina are listed as agency reps to coordinate with the Emergency Operations Center in Atwater. So we've got a plan in place and, you know, we just want to make sure that we're ready. I was able to roll out emergency out, or the incident action plan this afternoon with some of our key stakeholders. So we're just waiting to see what's going to happen next. And I'm looking at weather right now. It's supposed to be looking pretty severe here shortly, so.
All right. Thank you, chief. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. I think that was a clue, huh? Moving on the meeting. All right. Item 14, report update of Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, Peninsula Clean Energy, PCE, and San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District and Measure V Committee. So I'll go first. So I attended the first MCAG meeting as the mayor and began dialogue with the representatives from various cities and counties. It's always a good meeting when I leave there with a few dollars. It was voted upon for us to receive roughly around $200,000 in transportation money. And so that was a good, a good way to close that out. And then also, there are certain funds as far as dedicated homeless projects. And Dos Palos is one of the cities that elected to not use their funds. And so we're going to have some discussions with them because it's learned that part of the regulations is another city can actually share their funds with a neighboring city. And so we're hoping to reach out and make some contacts with Dos Palos and, you know, do that. So that's, that's pretty much all I have as far as is MCAG. Councilmember Lewis, if you have anything on the Valley Air Pollution Control District?
Not this week, Mr. Mayor. I believe it's next week. There's going to be a grand opening up in Stockton for, I believe it's a Frito-Lay facility that's going all green. So all of the board members will be going up there. And so I will make a report on that once that event happens.
Okay. All right. And then item 15 is City Councilmember Report. You know, one of the things I've just seen with previous council member meetings, when council members give reports, and it's just something I hope to kind of encourage us, is just to reach out to your constituents. You know, I really like to see having reports that the public has engaged with us and we're able to, you know, again, be those ears and come back and voice whatever, whatever we hear from our, from our people. And then for that, for our citizens is, is again, we're here for you. So reach out to us so that we can convey whatever information you give to us. So we'll start with the Councilmember Begonia. Do you have anything?
I have nothing to report for this meeting.
All right. Councilmember Jones? Okay. Councilmember Lewis?
Just two things, Mr. Mayor. A follow up on the report from our acting city manager and our chief of Fire Department. If some, with the level that we're in right now, if something becomes really major, how do we get the information out quickly to the public? I think that's, that's something that I like to know. I know there are a lot of people that have Facebook and things like that, but there are many people who don't. So how do we get the message out to them?
I think we've tried to stay, try to take that approach with social media, but also we've pushed out regards to the notifications at the county notification system that's out there. We will revisit that once we know if we have more additional information, and we'll come up with a game plan to make sure that we do get those notifications out, whether or not we can do some other form, whether it be the the reverse dial and those type of things.
Yeah, it's my understanding the county does have the reverse dial like phone intrusion, so everyone can receive an alert on their phone, rather if they enrolled it in or not.
And then my last request would be, you know, there are at least three of us that sit on committees. And so I'm hoping that here going forward, we can add the Downtown Association for Reports when they have committee meetings so that the city will know with its investment where where things are and what's happening with the the association and, you know, just what kind of updates are going on. So I would like to see that on the agenda as well. And that's it tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Lambert?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And then, yeah, last, I'll go last here. Again, just if people can do their best to stay dry, you know, we're having some inclement weather coming in so the better we can be prepared. And also too, and I know I'm probably preaching to the choir, but any weather related things, state of emergencies, if FEMA declares anything or our state declares anything, you know, the financial reimbursement aspects of it and filling out those those FEMA forms. So it's always good. We get money back to take care of our responsibilities. So that's, that's, that's all I have. All right. So with that being said, we're going to move to item 16, which is closed session. Item 16A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9B, one potential case. And item 16B, public employment, city manager recruitment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. And we will report out anything on that. So moved. All in favor? Aye. All right, ready? Yes. All right. So we're back from closed session. There's no reportable action at this time, and staff has been given direction. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? So moved. A second?
A second.
All right. Motion by Jones, second by Lambert, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned.